Thank you.
All right, we're in the call in July 22nd, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Start with silent meditation and then followed by a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Indonesia. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite in essence, for all.
Prior to our meeting this evening, we held an executive session regarding legal matters. Just note that we are recording this meeting and it'll be livestreamed on YouTube. I'd like to make a motion that we approve of the minutes of July, June 24th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Proceed to the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Our next topic, Fire Departments and Department of Emergency Services. We've received the June Westwood Fire Company Fire Chief's report is submitted for the board and resident review. The June Westwood Fire Company EMS report that was submitted for the board and the resident review. June Modena Fire Company Fire Chief's report submitted for board and resident review. The June Modena Fire Company Fire Chief's report. And these valid bill calls only submitted for board and resident review. And the June Modena Fire Company EMS report submitted for board and resident review. Next topic is in regard to our 2025 supervisor liaison appointments. Since there was some changes in the board composition, we have done some reassignments for liaison for the several committees. So I make a motion to appoint following 2025 board liaisons as presented. Township Office Supervisor Wright. Police Department Supervisor Dorado. Public Works Department, Sherwin Small McAvoy. Emergency Services and Fire Marshal Supervisor Dombowski. Planning Commission Supervisor Dombowski. Historical Commission Supervisor Lambert. Park and Recreation Supervisor Wright. And the Environmental Advisory Committee Supervisor Dorado. Second. Are there any questions or comments?
Can you just give a brief like what, what you guys do within these roles for these different departments or committees?
So, so the supervisors that are liaison into the committees is like the time with between the board of supervisors and that committee. So they can offer guidance or, you know, answer any questions that the committee might have and direct the committee to, you know, how to proceed with certain things that they're doing. Are any other questions or comments? Move to vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Proved with a proper vote. All right, our next topic is the presentation is the overview of the 2024 audit by Carl Hogan Widdham.
Welcome, Carl. Thank you. I just put together a couple of slides just because the audit report, you know, it's just standard form of report from the state and it's really hard to, you know, present. So I thought I'd put it in consolidated and put it in a way that it kind of relates to the monthly financial things you're getting and the different funds that you have and how they kind of roll up into the financial thing itself. So this is December 31st, 2024. My schedule didn't work out last month and able to come the previous month. But I'm here to present, you know, the results for 2024. And what you're going to see here tonight is that what was being presented to you by management for the year ended 2024 is going to be directly reflected here. I don't think we had any or any kind of adjustments that were made to books or records of the township that was presented to us prior. On the first slide I have here is the independent auditors report as I kind of related to before in fact that this is the only thing that is required by the township to be audited and submitted to the state was referred to as a DCED report. And what we do is the report that you received here tonight, we input it in online into the DCED for role and then it's uploaded into the state and then it's collected by the state for all the municipalities in the state. So in the case of these foul field country, they prepare their DCED report on the cash basis accounting. And in accordance with the cash basis accounting, we had a clean or unmodified opinion. Basically, the numbers that they stated before that were presented to us by management for December, our for 2024 were fairly presented. So the next couple of slides are just kind of like the results. And each one, if you look at the DCED, it's broken into different funds. But within those funds, within the DCED are funds that are kind of aggregated together based upon your internal reporting. So in the case of the general fund, the general fund is made up of your general fund and then also your parks and recreation fund. As you can see, revenues exceeded expenditures by about $260,000. Beginning fund balance 3.2, ending fund balance 3.5. That says in previous years, a lot of this gain is related to more than anticipated revenues. So the township, I think we've talked about this before, the township is extremely conservative, one budgeting for revenues. And, you know, I think expenditure seems to be right in line on an annual basis. And the current year gain being driven by more than anticipated revenues related to real estate tax collections, earned in tax collections, and then also investment earnings or earnings on your investments. And also within your current year expenditures for the general fund, there was also a $400,000 transfer that was made over to the capital projects. The next slide I have here is your special revenue fund. So within your special revenue fund, these are revenue sources that are specifically for restricted purposes. So first we have your liquid fuels fund, your liquid fuels fund accounts for annual appropriation through PNDOT. So every year you get annual appropriation of about $350,000. You had expenditures, you know, the kind of your expenditures fluctuate on an annual basis. And then look what fuels fund basically determined by what road projects need to be done on an annual basis. So you might have some years where you don't have as many road projects. And so if you went to last year's report, you would see an increase in your fund balance for liquid fuels. But in the current year, it more budgeted project for road paving except for 2024. And then also you have your fire EMS funds, just like across the whole county on these, you know, these costs have been increasing on an annual basis. You had a fund balance at the beginning of the year, $480,000. Your revenues exceeded your expenditures for the current year by about $163,000. And you have a fund balance there moving forward for $654,000 in the fire EMS fund. We have your capital projects funds. Your capital projects fund historically had been just made up of the capital products fund or your capital fund had been recently, you had your Harper funds, which were fully expended in the current year. Your revenues in the current year consists of number one, investment earnings plus $400,000 capital transfer over from the general fund. Your expenditures of both these funds primarily consisted of vehicle purchases and related accessories related to those vehicles. Revenues in the capital products fund exceeded expenditures by about $477,000. Fund balance at the end of the year is $1.2 million within the capital projects fund.
Excuse me, is that slide correct? Should the capital start and end at the same if there was a 400?
No, that, that is, the capital, the, the ending is correct. I see. Give a copy of the actual audit report.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, I just wanted to.
It means we're taking attention, Carl.
But that, yes, that's a good thing. Well, I came here early, get this done, and I was trying to get it done. So here, but. So it actually should be 1.7 million dollars. So beginning balance is correct, the ending balance is incorrect. So it should be the 1.7 that's over there on the other side there. So that right there is the one, the fund balance ending in the capital projects is incorrect. The 1.7 on the right hand side is correct. Next slide I have is the trash. And just like other municipalities too, increases everybody's contracting out for the, you know, trash services. And everybody's seen increases that, you know, not only discounting across, you know, all of my clients, et cetera. You had an increase in fee for the current year on your trash fund had an increase of revenues over expenditures of $189,000. Beginning fund balance, $470,000, fund balance and $659,000 in the current year. So that wraps up all the individual funds. And that here, I just put a little slide together. I did this last year as well. So as you can see, your fund balance 2015 is kind of increased incrementally, kind of in line with, you know, 2020 COVID. There was those years where you had those weird years where you had some revenues that exceeded when I think everybody thought we were going to have, you know, bad revenues that were going to be less than anticipated and they actually worked out better. We had the ARPA funds, et cetera. You know, kind of help out, you're able to fund some expenses that you might had. So, but since then, just in previous years, now you kind of leveled off that 3.5 million dollar level. But my understanding, you have a lot of things planned in the fight here, you know, in terms of capital projects, et cetera. The last fundings and other matters here, there's no, nothing reported on internal control or financial reporting or on compliance. This was, the report was filed with the DCED. Another thing, the good thing to point out is the debt statement, you know, you don't have any outstanding debt, outstanding general obligation bonds as of currently, you did have some loans that are being repaid for 2027, but they only totaled $28,000. Statement of capital expenditures, we talked about the vehicles and then also there was about $400,000 of paving projects. In 2024, they were paid out of the liquid fuel fund. The good thing about the cash basis of accounting and, you know, just the municipalities in general, we could apply very effective audit procedures. We confirm all your cash balances directly with the banks and, you know, that's a great audit procedure for third party sounds here for your cash balance. This should be at your end. You probably line it up and they match up to what management has on books. And we get test over 80% of your revenue through direct third party confirmation or reviewers supporting documentations. What we do is we issue third party confirmations for not only your tax, but, you know, permanent income tax, real estate taxes, transfer taxes, and we get all those back. And they tell us, hey, we submitted, we remitted this amount of money to township. And this is what's on the books of the township. And it's a really effective way for us to conduct our audit procedures. And it's a, you can rely on that heavily as a third party telling us what should be on the books of the township. We also do test of control and complaint over cash disbursements and payroll. So what we do is we pick a sample of cash disbursements and make sure that the proper internal controls are being followed. And then also we pick a sample of payroll to ensure that those employees were being properly paid and that there's proper controls in place to make sure that they're being properly paid in accordance with what was the budget and or what was in a left of argument in the agreement. And we found, we found no issues there. So what we do is we do the test of controls and then what we're able to do is to lower our risk assessment. Because everything is risk based, because you can't look at everything. So as a result of that, we were able to lower our risk. Risk and then hence, you know, it just makes our audit procedures easier when we get, determine that you have proper internal controls. And then also there's certain tests of compliance over grants, the liquid fuels, state pension aid, volunteer fire aid, the allocation of real estate tax mileage. So we kind of do that to make sure that the real estate tax mileage allocation that you set in place is being followed. And then also we want to make sure that those state monies that have compliance features are being properly adhered to as well. And I don't have, I don't have any questions or concerns with them.
I have a question. Thank you so much for that very comprehensive presentation. Do we, did you see any areas where we could even improve more?
I mean, I mean, the key when you're talking about a small township and a small municipality is to, I mean, there's, you only have a couple of people in the office. And I think it's key in terms of, you know, trying to, you know, implement segregation due to the best we can. So, you know, Dave doing certain points and then Scott reviewing, you know, what he's doing. And then also it's the responsibility and the smaller places for the board of supervisors to be that top level, whether it be check signing responsibilities, reviewing monthly financial reports, et cetera. You know, we review the minutes, we read the minutes, we look at what's being submitted to you on an annual basis in your packets as part of our thing. You know, you can determine that you're, you have compensating controls.
This is, and I mean, maybe this isn't the right, but the after, let's go for it. Did these plain audits or the succession of plain audits improve our bond rating?
If you did have, if you did go out for bond, yeah, yes, I'll tell you when, when you, if you do go out for general obligation debt, et cetera, what they look at is what is your fund balance? Is there, you know, and are you increasing your taxes on an annual basis? I mean, I know people don't want to hear that, but I know the public want to hear that. But when you actually go for general obligation debt, and I've said in a lot of S and P and Moody's calls, and they, there's the two main things that they're concerned about. What's your general fund fund balance? Is it, you know, increasing, you know, incrementally, but at the same time, they want to make sure that, you know, the tax, you know, the tax is appropriated.
So having a healthy general fund relative to the size of the client, the municipality is relevant.
Yeah, yeah, for, for, yeah.
The, mention the DCD. Is this manual? When did, when did we submit this?
We submitted, so it is due on April 1st and we submitted it in May of this year. So typically, April 1st is the deadline and, you know, we were, my firm was a little bit behind here.
DCD, DCD realizes every, there's, there's thousands of townships trying to all be.
Yeah, DCD will not, yeah, DCD will not bother.
I get their point. They were kind to us. They didn't.
Well, well, they don't, they, they typically won't bother a township or a municipality until, since, you know, very.
Yeah.
So they understand that there's thousands and they're dealing with a few.
And they're a pretty good agency to work for that thing.
Yeah, so they're, yeah. So they file, they, and they approve it.
There, there is a pending bill with a pay house to push it till the end of July. That's not bad stuff.
Realizing the, every township in the law has to do it all at the same time. And there were so many auditors.
Well, because, I mean, those, those kind of track with what most bond issuances have anyway, end of unit.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
But I'm saying, so that April 1st, I mean, it's literally written in a township code that was written decades ago. So everybody's like April 1st and right, you know, and so.
We tried to advertise the date.
I think that you still do, right?
We advertised the, the dense audit.
Then we still do.
There's another bill that's still trying to do that.
Yeah.
Overall, excellent cooperation, everything.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to approve the June 30th, 2025 treasurer's report as presented.
Second. Are there any questions or comments? Move to vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I propose make a motion to approve the payment authorizations for the period of June 25th, 2025 through July the 2nd, 2025 in total amount of $186,364.11 as presented. through July the second, twenty twenty five, in total amount of one hundred and eighty six thousand, three hundred and sixty four dollars and eleven cents as presented. Are there any questions or comments? Move with the proper second. Now, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, move on to the manager's report.
Okay, uh, hi, everyone, good evening, um, first on the list is a proposed resolution approved rules for public participation at board supervisors' meetings. Just a little um, just a little background here, uh, the board periodically reviews its public participation policy. I just want to make sure that the meetings are being conducted in the most effective manner. Uh, we made, we have a draft resolution here tonight, we made some changes, um, and uh, prepared to memorialize some of those changes, uh, just to kind of give a high level, um, the resolution is available, uh, the draft resolution can be reviewed online. Uh, but uh, so some of the big changes are that uh, that residents must go to the podium, state their name and address. This, of course, will help us uh, help us with the minutes and make sure that residents that are watching uh through the live stream on YouTube can hear uh, hear um, uh, residents uh, giving their uh, uh, their participation, so that, that's one of the first, uh, again, name and address, the other one is the timer will be used to inform residents. Uh, when three minutes have elapsed, we have a timer here, we're gonna try that out tonight, but then our treasurer is going to be the one uh to test it out. Uh, and uh, also so that the move, meeting runs smoothly, um, any questions from the public uh will be provided a later date, of course, if there's a question, we can provide a quick answer to, we don't want to do that, uh, but we want to make sure that meetings are running smoothly, so uh, we would uh, we would ask that residents, uh, again, if, if there's any questions, uh, we can answer quickly, we will, otherwise we'll provide a later date, and there's a proposed uh, proposed resolution in the board's package.
Great, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash fifty of establishing rules for public participation at board of supervisor.
Second. Move with the proper second, do we have any comments or questions?
Uh, did you supervisors put this together?
Pardon me?
Did you supervisors put this proposal together? Did you, as the supervisors, put this together?
Yes.
You did.
Yeah, it actually came from my office, because we, we viewed it elsewhere, so.
Okay, so you, okay.
So then we, obviously, we didn't push direction forward.
So instead of trying to hash stuff out during public participation, we're just gonna wait until later, right? Because I know we had the issue a few meetings ago where a woman came in, she'd been waiting a month to hear from the township, and Scott kept insisting like, oh, let's, let's, let's take care of this offline, let's do this later, let's, you know, instead of just giving an explanation of what happened and answering her questions, right? So now we're just gonna push it off as a policy. No, so.
Yeah, no, I'll add when you're done.
Yeah, so the, the idea is, the board is up here, they're here to make decisions based on what's on the agenda and the material that are presented before them in the packet. When they do that, they have, they have this much information. If someone comes up and asks a question that needs to be answered, there can't be an, there shouldn't be an expectation that manager, the treasurer, or anyone else is gonna have an answer directly at their fingertips. Now, we might, and the idea is still to keep continuous flow and discussion of things, but we don't want it to evolve into, hey, you don't have this answer, um, can't do X, Y, or Z, or you shouldn't do X, Y, or Z, it would be, the implication is if you don't have the answer, the kind of right of that.
But if you do have the answer, we can discuss it.
Yeah.
At the time, okay.
And then that's the intent, and I think, um, you know, from, from our standpoint, to add a little bit more structure and um, uh, you know, a better flow so that everyone can be heard. Um, you know, to try to keep people to a certain frame of mind, so, and to bring the person up to the podium so that we can accurately plug them in as the name of that person, their address, and what their, their situation is.
Now, the other question, I mean, that's kind of B S to have, to give your name and address as part of a public discussion in the township, right? So is that required or is that requested?
No, that's required.
That is.
And part of the reason for that is that the people that are allowed to comment on township issues and ask questions about township issues, you need to be a resident.
So are you checking at that time that they give their address that they are a resident?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna call point of order, I'm gonna recommend that instead of, because what's going on right now is exactly what this draft resolution seeks to not.
Oh, you know I'm resident, so I'm asking, are you checking real time that it's a resident?
Please do not interrupt. When the supervisor is speaking, yeah. I would ask that the public read the draft and allow the board to practice and put it in place so that we can work out the case. But the rules are fair, they're equitable, and they've been vet by our solicitor.
So what happens if someone comes up to the podium, they give their name and address, and they don't live in the township? What, what, what is the result, right? So what, what's the enforcement, what's the?
The.
No, go ahead.
So the, the township can ask the person to stop speaking, because they're out of order, if they're not a resident of the township, technically the township board has the ability to.
But are you looking up the address as they say the address to make sure they are a resident in the township? I mean, is that the process we're going through, are you, as the solicitor, looking up the address? Is a super, like, what is the process, right? I mean, we're getting forward a, a, right, a, a resolution, but what is the process for this resolution?
It would be that someone's gotta identify where they live and the address, that can be looked up if need be, if it turns out that they're not a resident, then they'd be informed, hey, you're, you know, non-residents or non-taxpayers of the township aren't permitted to make public comment. But if they give the wrong address and wrong name, that'll be addressed later with them, either through if they come back later to make another public comment, or at another meeting, or at some other.
And have we had an issue with this, with people who are not residents talking, speaking during public participation, I mean, is this something that we really need to create a policy and enforce? Because it has been.
So what I'm going to ask is that, um, you read the resolution, um, it was on.
You read the resolution to us, right?
No, you did not read it.
Oh, it's, there's more to it, okay.
Yeah, so several pages, I asked that you read it, um, if you have questions about it, um, you know, please come back to the next meeting and address those issues. At this time, I'd like you to absorb it now, um, uh, you know, at your leisure, but we're gonna move on on the agenda.
Well, I mean, this is the purpose of the questions or this motion, right? Because we're passing a motion on a resolution that we haven't read. And we have questions, that's, I mean, isn't that the purpose of the questions for the motion? To understand the resolution, it's gonna, you want to pass this resolution before we've had a chance to ask questions, so you want to pass it, then you want me to read it, and then what?
Three minutes.
There's nothing to do with that.
Three minutes.
Are you a resident?
There is. Stop, just, just stop.
I'm asking legitimate questions.
Just, just.
Don't tell me to just stop, I'm asking legitimate questions, there's a motion, and we have questions.
We're going.
I don't, I, I don't think these are unreasonable questions, for a motion you're trying to pass.
We're, we're gonna close it at this.
Let's status quo.
There's a motion with a proper second, comments or clunk?
I have a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Before the proper. Um, Scott, bulk trash cleanup day.
Okay, this is uh informational here, um, just wanted to, uh, whatever one of the township is investigating, having a cleanup day in late September, October. Uh, this would be an opportunity for residents to get rid of large amounts of uh household uh bulk trash, uh, beyond, this would be beyond what our bulk collection takes, so, um, if someone's looking to clean up their front yard, clean out their basement or garage, uh, this would be the opportunity for them, uh, the resident would bring their bulk items to the township building. And, you know, obviously, uh, this, this, one of the benefits here would be to prevent dumping, which is always a problem, but um, we'd be looking at providing the service to our residents as well. Uh, we are working on a date right now, and um, again, we're looking at uh, either the end of September or October, um, I will have more details at the August meeting. And that's all I have.
Was there a great idea?
Thank you, Scott.
Very funny.
All right, Steve, on to the full under first.
So the first matter on the legal agenda is the draft, um, employment agreement with the chief of police for the period from um January of this year to the end of twenty twenty seven, so it's a three-year agreement. Been posted online, but it spells out all the basic terms, including the salary, the benefits, the hours, and all the other duties that are attended with Chief Osborne continuing your duty.
I make a motion approving the three-year employment agreement in the form as presented between Chad Osborne and Eastvaleville Township for the position of the chief of police.
Sorry.
Move with the proper second, are there any comments?
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
I did say. Did anybody have any comments? Any comments?
That was a clever.
All right. All right, call for a vote.
Aye.
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 All right, the Rouse Chamberlain escrow release.
I make a motion to approve the five thousand dollar cash escrow release. Rouse Chamberlain residential funding.
Second.
Move with the proper second, are there any comments?
This bridge press.
This is a trust, so he has part of their maintenance bond, what's, they dedicated the roads and all the other materials as part of that, uh, eighteen months ago. They had to put up a bit of additional money to monitor the, uh, his engineer was monitoring like their plant trees. And uh, that time period has now left, and the engineer did go out and review it. At least that's five thousand dollars.
So the builder is done, our engineer is satisfied, and this zeroes out any escrow requirements for rich press.
Correct, yep.
We're done now.
All right, are there any questions or comments? Yes.
Where is this uh subdivision located, is that the one near the borders challenge?
Off West Sister Road.
South Bay Road.
Town Road, yeah, Town.
Thank you. I only know because it's right behind the area. That I vote.
All right, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 And then lastly, a legal report is a termination agreement, a release between Eastvaleville Township and Traffic Planning and Design with respect to the project for Mortonville Road. The project was done, T P D was doing the oversight for it, it's been a couple of years ago, T P D was doing the oversight for it. The contractor, when they uh did some work, missed putting down some of the padding, that resulted in a partial failure of that road. The contractor is now fixing and repairing that based on the recommendation of the A A years. But this is a termination agreement between us and T P D with them paying to the township nineteen thousand dollars.
I make a motion to approve termination agreement, releasing the form as presented between Eastvaleville Township and Traffic Planning and uh, take it.
Move with the proper second, are there any questions or comments?
Did it cost us money to repair this, or was this covered by the bond buyer?
No, that was covered by the company.
It was, okay, that was the reimbursement, it was only nineteen grand, but.
They were, I, no, no, the contractor covered it.
With the T P D.
Yeah, T P D was with, we're doing the.
Can call for the.
Aye.
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 That's all I can write.
All right, thank you, uh, Park and Recreation Board. Do the summer concert event on August twenty first, uh, class of eighty-four will be performing. Uh, we've got our family fun day, uh, or family fun fest on Saturday, August second, from nine AM to two PM. So we have a couple uh different proposals for um people that'll be either performing or um participating in the family fun fest on August second. So I make a motion approving a proposal from the Y M C A of Greater Brandyline for the pit truck at a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars an hour from the Township's Park and Recreation Fund for the Township's Family Health Fair on Saturday, August second, twenty twenty five.
Second.
I retrieve consultant. I see you can open it for all.
Thank you. I move with the proper second, any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Proposal from Crystal Murphy and the music notes, um, the proposed motion, I make a motion that the township approve a proposal from Crystal Murphy and the music notes in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Township's Park and Recreation Fund for a family concert on August second, twenty twenty five. Move with the proper second, any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposal from Jets Bounce Party Rental. I make a motion that the township approve a proposal from Jets Bounce Party Rental in the amount of five hundred and eighty dollars from the Township's Park and Recreation Fund for an inflatable rental at the family fun event on August second, twenty twenty five.
Fine.
Move with the proper second, are there any questions or comments?
I have a question, Terry here, hi, Terry. Have we had this jet bounce before, this company, um, now, or is this the first time? I do, we have, we have, they have insurance.
We have the certificate, I filed the certificate of the matter, and the certificate of insurance, and a W nine for new companies that we've never done before. From township present, in here.
Any other questions or comments? All right, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And finally, proposal from Birthday Buddies. I make a motion that the township approve a proposal from paintings on people in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars from the Township's Park and Recreation Fund for Louis character at the family fun event on August second, twenty twenty five.
That's, that's incorrect, where it's not.
I realized that when I.
Yeah, it's Birthday Buddies, painting on.
It is Birthday Buddies, yes, and stand corrected, please, let the ministry reflect that. So I make a motion that the township approve a proposal from Birthday Buddies in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars in the Township's Park and Recreation Fund for Louis character at the family fun event on August second, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Move with the proper second, are there any questions or comments?
Question.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, from the planning commission, the report was submitted uh, for the police department, the June police report was submitted for the board and resident review. I propose, um, I make a motion approving the purchase of a seven-year, one hundred thousand mile premium care extended service plan from Blood Ford at the cost of two thousand seventy-five.
Second.
Move with the proper second, are there any questions or comments?
Um, what's this replacement, replacing?
Yes. They've replaced the um twenty eighteen Toyota with a bad engine.
Oh, that, you know, that's one hundred and seventy, only seven years old.
Police cars are not like your typical uh residential or, you know, private use vehicles.
That's, that's right, thanks for reminding me of that.
Chief, chief, is this, does this type of policy happen on all the vehicles, or is it a specific case?
Well, um, Scott and I had developed a fleet management plan for the police cars going forward, and this was part of that plan to have the larger a larger portion of their service life protected under warranties to try and offset the costs that we are seeing on the tail end when the cars are falling out of warranty and needing a lot of repairs, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, move with the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, um, at a previous meeting, there was a request for a speed study on Park Avenue. Um, Chief Osborne and his team completed that, and we wanted to speak to that.
I can speak briefly, um, Ms. Petro from Wilmington Road, uh, Park Avenue, um, had concerns at the last meeting regarding speeding there, um, we deployed, we had a survey device at, at the police department. We deployed that survey device for a seven-day period um in that unit block of Park Avenue. What the survey do, the body does is it tracks the total number of cars, it tracks uh the average speed of the cars, it tracks um how many violations for speeding had taken place with those cars that have passed through that survey area. It records the. It records the fastest speed of anything going through that, that zone during that period. Also, um, gives recommendation on what levels of enforcement need to be or should be implemented by the police department based upon how many violations per number of cars that are traveling that road. The, the end results were in a seven-day period, three hundred and eighty cars uh, traveled down Park Avenue. That's an average of about fifty-four cars per day. Um, the average speed was actually found to be twenty-five miles per hour, even though the posted speed limit's thirty-five. There were two total violations, and by violations, we mean cars going ten miles an hour or more above the posted speed limit. There were two cars that, that did that during that week-long period. And the enforceable violation was at one percent. And the high fastest speed was forty-seven.
That's it?
The. Forty-seven, somebody was.
Can you get a reiterate, what time, what, when, when did this occur? Was it during the school year or down and stuff?
Um, it started, uh, Friday, the twenty-seventh through July fourth.
Okay, so it wasn't during the school.
No, it was as, as a result of, of our complaint, we, we just went out that Friday and Tuesday night with the meeting. Friday, we had the device deployed and then did the survey for seven days. And anybody would like a copy of it? I know I gave Eena a copy, but if anybody else would like a copy, I, I have it here.
How, how's the device work, like?
It is, it is essentially a traffic survey device. It is, um, radar operated. It's contained within a box and it's chained to a, chained to a pole.
So, but do you know it's like, is it like the speed thing so you can see that it's?
No.
Okay, it's like a little more.
It, it looks like a gray box about this big mounted on a telephone pole. So if, if you, you would not necessarily identify. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It, it, it could be anything, a utility, anything. It, it's not like the signs where it's flashing.
Where if I slows down.
Yeah, could, could influence, this is a straight survey that, that is blind essentially.
Thanks.
Yes.
I will, I want to thank Chief Osborne for the expeditious, uh, return on that, my, um, my concern about it and my, one of my neighbors that came with me that, that evening of last month. Uh, when he called me and let me know about the, uh, uh, statistics on this, I expressed to him that I was surprised, um, of the low mileage or low speed, excuse me, uh, the cars going by and, uh, I don't, uh, I can't explain it, but, uh, I will present this to the neighborhood and hopefully they'll know that chief is on it and, um, the council is on it. And, uh, I really do appreciate his time. And, uh, like I said, his quick response on that. And, uh, hopefully all will be safe. Um, we'll just see, but this is still, uh, in the works, so to speak, but thank you, thank you, chief. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Department, the June Road Department report was submitted for board and resident review. The Environmental Advisory Council. Mike.
Uh, I make a motion to authorize under the board chairman's extended letter of support through the order geographic name, rename the stream along Misty Patch Road as Schist Creek.
Sorry.
Why?
Hilarious.
Yeah, I just. I'm an environmental advisory council. Um, this, unfortunately, the people, we voted on this unanimously, this was all provided or we just voted in the A C meeting. And I think besides the letter that you have, one of the members, Lauren Kyers, should, uh, kind of explain it. I am not a Brockford geology specialist, but it's, it's mainly along the borders is the stone called Schist. Schist creeks are more resistant to erosion, able to maintain clear cold water, ideal for sensitive species like drought, aquatic insects or moses. These rocky creeks often occur in forested regions that support intact riparian zones and diverse upland watershed. Microhabitants for invertebrates and spawning grounds for fish. So it was named just because that is the raw formation, um, throughout the. I just thought I'd add that because I couldn't make it to me. That's the definition, but, uh, of the, uh, of the geology of that area, but that doesn't explain why the name changed. I thought Misty Patch was.
Well, it's not, I'm sorry, it's, it's the, the tributary, the, the site stream, that does not have an official designation right now. If you look at any maps, it just says unnamed tributary. So I think the E A C, to Terry's point, is trying to build awareness on these very important little tiny creeks that we have.
So it was never given.
Never had a name.
Oh, I understood.
So we're giving it an identity and we're trying to, I think the agency is trying to help make people more aware of these valuable creatures.
That explains.
It has no name right now.
It, uh, okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Had a name.
You would think, but there's a lot of little creeks that just never got a name after two hundred years.
How broad is this creek? How broad?
I haven't been there. I'm guessing you could probably jump over it.
That's fine with me. Well, okay, pretty much. Thank you.
But it is an exceptional value creek, um, you know. It's been protected and it's.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Are there any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Um, historical commission, um, no report submitted. I'm making a motion to appoint Jennifer Carling to the historical commission for the term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Move with the proper second. Are there any questions or comments?
Nice to see someone, another person stepping up to fill, fill in the historical.
Here.
I don't believe.
All right, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on, um, is there any? Any new business? All right, this is the public participation, um, portion. If anybody has any comments, we do ask that you come up to the podium and, or at least state your name and your address. We're gonna give you some.
Mike Petros, seven oh five Buck Run Road. And I just had a question. We weren't aware of the public participation, um, section that came up today till the agenda came out, which was like twenty-four hours ago. So how was anybody being made aware that this motion was going to be put forward today in order to read it, know about it, understand it, and be armed to ask questions? Kind of to Shane's point, again, it was only put out in the agenda, that was when I first heard about it, which was less than twenty-four hours ago. So there be more time for discussion? When something comes up as far as a change like that goes, or was it posted earlier than that? And I just wasn't made aware of it or wasn't able to. How would we be made aware of such a thing?
Um, well, it was.
And not only, I'm sorry to just cut you off, but, um, you only kind of briefly went over with ten. So no one had a chance to read it or be aware of it until the vote was being done, which.
Yeah, so, so the agenda packet is now posted online if you go on the website, uh.
Yes, within twenty-four hours of the meeting.
Right, uh, that, that is correct. Our, uh, agenda as well is posted, uh, by Monday afternoon, so we have that as well. And, uh, we will have the resolution. It's actually up on there now, but it will be posted. Um, it will be available in the, uh, in the meeting room for future meetings and, um, we'll also have it up under, uh, agendas as well so the public can hear it.
I guess my point is that shouldn't we have at least a week lag time before a vote is cast in order to have discussion on motions like that? Rather than less than twenty-four hours for the public to consume it, form an opinion on it. And again, I hadn't read it, so I, and I know I'm getting near my three minutes, so I'm gonna sit down, but I happen to agree that this section does need more organization. So I do agree with the idea of the motion without, you know, having the chance to, to kind of read it, digest it, but just, it seems like if it comes up, it should be mentioned, but the vote maybe be a month after, it could just for time for public consumption and to.
Appreciate that.
To have a discussion, that's all. But like I said, I.
That's a good point.
I agree with the format of it because it does, it gets out of hand. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, anyone, I don't know if anyone really behind me is trying to just.
You try and go ahead.
Connie. I'm good. I'm squeezing by. I don't know who's writing this down. Connie McGillicuddy, starts with M C L. I live on Park Avenue. I'm not giving my full address because I don't think the general public. I'm kind of on board with what he just said. Knowing that this was something new, I thought it would be good to table it and let us go home and, and click that link and, and go read that multi-page. You know? When I first moved here and first started coming to meetings, we had to come up to the podium and give our name. So this isn't a big shocker to me, other than that it adds time for everybody going back and forth. We haven't really had, you know, a problem with being able to hear people other than Scott. Um, I think it would be cool to table it, let us all go home and read it so that we have, you know, more, more knowledge about, but not to give you our opinion because you represent us. Hopefully you vote the way we want. I don't think any, any of it is, is ridiculous. It used to be this way anyway. But to just throw it at us and say, oh, but on something you don't know anything about is not very, you know, reasonable, so. That's all I have to say.
Are there any other public comments?
Yeah. If anyone wants to donate for three minutes, I'd be happy to stay up there for a while. Are there rules against like?
Yeah, you can't.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I'll bring the resolution because I haven't freaking read it.
You're reading, you come back.
Am I good? What's that?
I think I put you a little extra.
Oh, heck, yeah, that's my. So I want to know for Mortonville Bridge, the bridge, right, where are we on that? Very quickly, because I'm under the gun here. Is it fixed yet?
Mortonville Bridge?
The bridge.
No, the bridge is, uh, still down right now.
What are we waiting for?
It's in the engineering phase, right?
How long's it been in the engineering phase? How long does it take to engineer a new bridge? They fixed that one, right, on whatever the road is. Yeah, on eighty-two, like.
Yeah, I don't know. That's a question.
So we'll add, yeah, well, it's engineering. Um, so if we can get an update on that, these, there's things that come up like all the time that we have no status. I mean, there should be a list of here are action items that the township is responsible for, and here's where we are, and here's the plan, right? But, I mean, we, it's been in engineering for quite a while, right? I don't know when that's going to be done. Is there a deadline? Do we, you know, I mean, we're paying them to do something, right? So if we could prioritize that, I know there are some safety issues around not being able to use that bridge. Um, where are we with traffic calming? Another thing that's kind of in the works.
Uh, the, uh, construction is, uh, scheduled for fall.
Okay. And can we do away with that? Do we have to do it just because we need to do something from that study?
Yeah, I can answer that question.
I mean, are we just doing it to do something from the thirty, forty thousand dollar study for Newlandville? Sorry, you don't have, you don't have.
It was requested and it's been funded.
It was requested and it's been funded, but there were also requested streetlights, they requested sidewalks, they request, so why this of all things? And on a curve that you can't even really do thirty-five, which is the speed limit, going around that curve. I've tried. I mean, I do it in the little roadster, but I can't do it in my SUV. Like, you have to slow down and I watch people and you have to slow down to go around that curve. So I, I just don't get it. I, I mean, it's funded and there's a grant and that's fine. That's great. I'm running out of time. Um, and then also, how specific do we need to be with right-to-no requests? Um, because I know I've run into an issue recently where I put in a right-to-no request and it was denied because it wasn't specific enough. So I don't know what level of specificity we need, um, to have that fulfilled. So I'll, I'll obviously appeal it, but I feel like it's a BS move and it was thirty-three days later to say it's not specific enough. So there's like definitely some, you know, sort of garbage going on with the township. So I don't, I don't know if that's a solicitor question, if that's a township. I mean, you denied it, so I'm sure you can.
Township follows state law with all rights and no requests. We don't treat any resident differently. If there, uh, if there's something that needs a legal review, then that's what we do.
So it was legally reviewed and legal said it wasn't specific enough?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And what would it, do I, I mean, can I ask what it needs to be specific enough to have the request fulfilled?
Yeah, you should probably check the open records office website, state law. They give you guidelines to what a profession look like, but, um.
But I know things can be omitted and redacted, right? So I can request everything and you can omit and redact, but if it's still.
Then, Kate, I don't want to use up your time. Okay, so this come out.
I mean, I've got a lot of, I'll wait, I'll wait for the next meeting, whenever that is, but, yeah. If anyone wants to get up and ask questions, I have several you could ask.
For sure.
I didn't give my name either.
Right, are there any other, are there, you know, other comments? Yes.
Yeah.
My name's Steve Bauer. I live on Clear River Lake. I hate that. Yeah, I just want everybody just to be aware. My wife had, we had a very big, covered account, her credit card got hacked. And, uh, the next, the, the next day, five boxes of rugs showed up at our front door. So my wife got on the computer, or they, they card my card, but why the heck they send to her house, I don't know. And I wanted to know, should I tell the police about it? Have the police come and see you guys or have my wife come see the police?
Absolutely.
Just so you know, yeah, I just told everybody to just be aware, it was hacking happen, so.
And it happened today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you gonna keep the road?
I was gonna give him out.
All right, are there any other, are any other comments? All right, I'm moving to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.